I'd like to call to order the Cape Elizabeth Town Council meeting, a regular agenda, for September 9th, 2013. Welcome, everybody. This is our first official meeting with our new setup, and it's certainly very different. And my hope is that those of you in the audience can appreciate that we used to be sitting up here, like, four and a half, five feet above everybody. This is really a major change, and one that I think will be continuing to be well received. If we could have a roll call, please?
Chairman Walsh?
Here.
Counsel Gouvinale?
Here.
Counsel Jordan? Counsel Ray?
Here.
Counsel Sherman?
Here.
Counsel Sullivan?
Here.
Counsel Wagner?
Okay, if we'd all stand, please. For our Pledge of Allegiance, we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our first order of business is counsel reports and correspondence. Is there any counsel reports or correspondence? Did anyone like to -- David, please.
I had the pleasure of attending the 10th Annual Whifflepalooza Event in the Brentwood Neighborhood. This event was featured on the front page of The Courier. It is due to the inspiration and hard work of the LaValle family, and it's just a lot of fun. And over the last 10 years, it's raised approximately $4,500 for the Thomas Memorial Children's Library, so a big thanks to the folks in Brentwood primarily who are behind that event. It was a lot of fun and does good for our library.
Great, thank you, David. Are there any other reports? Jessica?
Yes, the Library Planning Committee is proceeding in its charge from the Town Council. There'll be a survey online, and maybe Frank, you might kind of continue with that information.
Okay. So, in our continuing effort to solicit feedback and insights and points of view from the community, we are going to be circulating a survey, which will be online using Survey Monkey. So, it's not going to be statistically a scientific survey approach, but we thought it would be a way in which to get some additional information from the community to supplement the roundtable that we held last week at the high school. The survey will be posted online on Friday?
Thursday, the 12th.
Thursday, the 12th, and we are going to be sending emails out to people to encourage them to respond to it, as well as having paper surveys around town. So, we're really trying to get as much public input to the process as possible, so that everyone's points of view is reflected in the ultimate recommendations that we make this.
Great, thank you. Any other reports? We did receive, at each of your places tonight, we did receive a letter to us about the decision of the change in the senior citizen membership rate at the community services, especially as it relates to the Dawn Richards Pool. In talking to Michael, it's my understanding that the community services advisory group has responded to these citizens relative to this, but I don't know, Michael, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I know an email -- thanks, Jim. I know an email went out today from the community services director to some of those citizens. I'm not sure. They also sent an email, so I'm not sure if it went to all of them.
Okay.
And who was CC, but I know it went to the lead signer. Basically saying that community services about nine months ago perhaps went to a policy of no senior citizen discounts, and that what citizens are seeing today is really catching up with the pool that originally it applied to the pool at the beginning, but because of the way that the timing of the different memberships, it's a little bit different. I just did find the email here. "The decision was made last fall with the support of the Community Services Advisory Commission, and the goal was to provide programming facilities at the most reasonable price possible to all participants. When we have to figure in a potential senior discount that became the base cost for either a program or facility, in essence, non-seniors pay an escalated price." It's the old, you know, if you give someone a discount, someone else needs to pay for it. And then, this is again from Russell Pack, the community services director. He goes on to point out that they have a scholarship program in place that can help residents who have financial need and allow them to participate in any of the various community services programs and facilities.
Yeah. I mean, this particular membership was $230 a year for the pool for an individual. It's now 300. That's the difference. But it's my understanding that they did reduce the overall membership by $5 by being able to sort of equalize this across all membership categories. So, I just want to make sure the record reflects the fact we've received this letter.
Just to clarify, so this is a revenue-neutral event?
That is the indication from the community services director.
Yeah.
I'll forward to you the email that we received from him.
Be good to take a peek at it anyway, especially from a finance standpoint. Yeah. Yeah. And also, the town center, is there any update from the town center committee? Jamie or David, anything?
We're going to be meeting, I believe it's October, before our next council meeting in October, at 4:00 that day. And I believe that is it in terms of our next meeting.
Okay. And then, I understand we had some news about Key Bank today.
Yeah.
Jamie might want to share that with us, because I know he--
Yeah, well, I happen to have a business checking account there for my law office, so I received in the mail today, I noticed that Key Bank will be closing effective sometime the next month or two.
December 6th.
Yeah, December. So, there'll no longer be any bank in the town capable of doing that.
Wow. Oh, that's incredible.
I think it hooes the town to maybe solicit some interest from some other banks to see whether or not there could be a bank situated in the town.
Because I know the town hall walks just a very few steps of the road to make whatever transaction decisions they have to make, so it's going to be a little different, isn't it?
It's a long walk.
Yeah.
Long walk to Mill Creek.
It's going to impact us.
Yeah. So, well, I'm sorry to hear that. They've been certainly great neighbors for a very long time. Sorry to see that happen, but, you know, in these times, you know, these decisions are tough, but they obviously, you know, it's all about survival in some ways. But, okay, any other reports, correspondence? Nothing? Okay, well, we'll move on to the next item, which is a Finance Committee report. Frank, do you have anything to report?
Well, we're continuing to work on the long-term capital planning process. Michael Moore, the school board, and myself were meeting and exchanging data. I met with Michael last week to get some information in terms of how one plans for bonding when it's necessary. And we'll continue to meet, I guess we're meeting tomorrow morning, actually, you and John Christie and Michael and myself, to review some of the materials in order to get prepared for our September 20th meeting.
Yeah.
So, I think we're making progress in that respect.
Great. Appreciate all that work. That's great. And I appreciate the school board's, you know, emphasis on this as well. It's good news. I mean, I know at the teachers' meeting, the superintendent alluded to the teachers that this was a major emphasis that was being placed in looking at overall capital needs long-term, and I know a lot of teachers were pleased to hear that at least there was a lot of thought and a lot of discussion going on around that from a long-term strategy standpoint. So, tomorrow, John Christie, the chair of the school board, and myself will be meeting with the two finance chairs just to get an update and sort of a strategy around the next round where we have both boards together. And as you both, as everyone knows, the both boards will be together, and there will also be the report from the auditors at the same time. And I know some of you can't be here, but we are going to go forward with that meeting. And the auditor's report certainly will be available to you, David, if, you know, you wish to read them ahead of time. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the first opportunity for citizens to address the council for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to do so? Don't everybody rush to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Jim. Just very quickly, the library just finished their summer reading program. Now, the school's back in session, and over 500 different individuals participated in that this year, which is pretty amazing that everyone kept reading during the summer and utilized the library for that purpose, and it went well. The library was also named at the end of last week as a Family Place Library, which is a program that focuses on, particularly on early literacy and preschoolers. And we're one of 250 in the country that's part of this program. So, Rachel Davis, the librarian, is actually going to be going down to a library on Long Island, New York in the next couple of months for its training on that program to learn more about it. But it really looks at, you know, what you do in the library, particularly for preschoolers, and to make sure the programs are relevant, they prepare kids for school, and it's just, you know, it sounds like an excellent program. The police department, you mentioned last month, I believe we have a new Sergeant Paul Fenton. Since that time, Mark Doval, who was our community liaison officer, has switched positions and now is the detective, which was Paul Fenton's position. Mark's position of community liaison officer has been assumed by David Galvin, one of the police officers, so he's already beginning to work with the schools and other parties as the community liaison officer. And did want to mention we're having another prescription drug drop-off on October 26th. Those have been fairly popular. And Public Works, the Charles Road Project is virtually done. There's a few more. The driveway connections, a little bit of paving needs to be done. It was supposed to be done last week, didn't happen. Bob is trying to work with the paving company to get them here. The Shore Road sidewalk is now complete. Looks, you know, it's nice to ever see, it's already, you can see people using it, particularly ones who are running from one place to another, and they now have that section that they can safely use the sidewalks. That's good to see.
They did a great job on that. They did it fast with very low disruption. Really terrific.
Good. And this new exterior fencing as well that's been put in by another contractor, and it's actually still a little bit more of that to be done. Some, a little bit of it was backordered. Spurwick Avenue, there's a culvert on Papoutik Drive, near Papoutik Drive, which is due to be replaced. This is not the Papoutik entrance to the golf course. Papoutik Drive is over closer to the medical building, and there's a low point, there's a culvert, and before we do the paving there, that culvert's being replaced on 18th of September, so there's going to be some disruptions. The ladder truck was just, had a major refurbishment after 20 years, $70,000. It got stripped down to no paint, all the red sections that get repainted, and a lot of, you know, rust work to stop rusting. The seats were replaced, there were issues with those. The windshield was replaced, the bumpers were replaced. Just, you know, what it really does, you know, it takes a vehicle that to replace would cost $600,000, and for $69,000, it was really given a new lease on life for, you know, another 10 years or so, 10 years or more. So, it was good to see it back and up and running. We also have eight new personnel that have joined the fire department in the last two weeks. We have six new students capable of the high school who run with the fire department on their different activities, and that's always helpful. Of those who graduated in recent years, we still have four of those who are in college who come back and help out, so it is something that continues thereafter. We also have four students from SMCC who are living in the dorms who are becoming affiliated with the Engine One Company in terms of responding to calls down in that end of town. So, you know, if you look at that, that's a total of 10, actually. If you look at, you know, to get 10 new people in very short time, Peter Gleason, the fire chief, was mentioning this morning that there was an article or something on TV about a couple of other departments, actually, the communities that border us, having challenges with volunteer personnel, the fire service, and we're fortunate because of our continuing volunteers, because of these programs with the high school, with Southern Main Community College, we do okay when we have fires in terms of getting folks to respond to them. So, it's good. And finally, there'll be a town center forum on October 17th. And did want to mention, remind everyone, the next regular council meeting is on Monday, October 7th, which is a departure from normal. It's with the holiday, the following Monday. The decision was made last month to move that meeting to the first Monday.
Good.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything about the appreciation, or the, we had a great luncheon at the Snow Squad that happened between our last meeting and now?
Do you want me to, or do you want to?
Well, I thought it was, first of all, Deb, thank you for all the energy and effort that you put into putting that together, and it was very well attended.
Yeah.
And I was extremely impressed by the folks and the conversation at the table and the enthusiasm about working for Cape Elizabeth. And we were able to single out Mr. McGovern for all of his service, which I thought was--
There were 17 people singled out.
But you happened to be the person here tonight that we can single out.
You got that one, okay.
Sorry about that. I mean, that's one of the few benefits of having this in my, you know, anyway.
Well, thank you for that. We did discuss today with the personal advisory committee representatives from every department. They were very appreciative. It was, we had a luncheon at the Snow Squad, they very much enjoyed that. I thought the Snow Squad did a good job. They appreciated seeing quite a few of the counselors were able to be there, to be there, and that's all good, so.
Yeah, I thought it was very well done, and I appreciate all the work that went into that behind the scenes. Absolutely. Okay, any questions for the manager on his report, or any redirect on that? No? Again, Michael, thank you for the detail. I think that for all of us, it's important to kind of get a sense of what's really going on around here, and do you have another?
I did want to defer to Deborah on giving an update on the November election.
Absentee ballots for the November election will be available sometime the first week in October. I think October 7th or so is that first week. We anticipate the ballots being available. Prior to that, information will be on the town's website, as it always is, including how to vote absentee, the ballots, both the state and local ballots, and the absentee ballot applications, so that will be coming up soon and later in the next few weeks, so we'll be posting as information.
And we have a few candidates running in both--
We do. There are three for council, three for school board, and two seats available on each, so, and those names are listed on the website as well.
And there's nothing else on this ballot?
Not for municipal. There are some state bond questions.
Okay. And those are the highway?
The highway, and then--
And the ones that are to alcohol beverage? Is that?
No, there's, I don't recall. You might be right, but there's some on higher education, some monies for the community colleges for some buildings.
Okay.
Some work at the University of Maine.
Great.
Might be a little bit for corrections, I'm not sure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the review of draft minutes of August 12th, 2013, and the chair will entertain a motion. Kathy?
Move to approve the draft minutes of August 12th, 2013.
Do we have a second? Second, Frank. Do we have any discussion, any comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of minutes as presented? It's unanimous. First item on the agenda is a public hearing for the building permit issuance notification procedure, item 117. So, I will declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone who wishes to address this question, please come forward and take the podium and just give us your name and address. Appreciate that. Doesn't look like anyone is rushing to the podium. So, I guess I will declare the public hearing closed and move to item 117, the building permit issuance notification procedure, and I'll turn to our ordinance committee chair, Kathy Ray.
Thank you very much. You'll see on your agenda that the final draft, I guess, that has been worked on by ordinance planning and I think just about everybody else, is there for potential approval this evening. And I printed out the agenda because it comes out with red, but when I printed on my pad, it doesn't come out red, so I don't know if you all can tell the differences, but for those who've been on the ordinance and have worked on it, you would know. And we also have Ben here, our code enforcement officer. So, I guess one of the questions that I've been asked to ask is if Ben is ready to implement this, and maybe we should direct questions to Ben.
Ben, would you like to join us at the podium?
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, good evening. We estimate that one to two times per week, we'll be sending a notice out for a building permit based on the triggers identified in the ordinance, which is 125 feet from the normal high water mark, an expansion of a structure or a new structure within 125 feet of the normal high water mark, or within 10 feet, an expansion of a structure within 10 feet of a setback line. And those seem to be the sensitive issues we have. We have two in particular that are in court, and they're being heard based on timeliness because the neighbors didn't know that the building permits had been issued. That was the primary driver for this ordinance, was to prevent that from happening. And I do like the way the ordinance turned out, and from an administrative perspective, I think there'll be one to two notices sent out per week. It'll go to the immediate abutters, probably four, five, six notices for each building permit that triggers it. And that's not a large administrative burden. We have the staffing to do that. I'll, that will generate a few additional questions and phone calls for me, and that can be absorbed as well, but we're ready to implement it.
Anybody have any questions for Ben? David?
Ben, one of the primary issues that came up for the ordinance committee, and I'm assuming before the planning board as well, though I didn't watch those proceedings, was which abutters would actually get the notice? And there was a lot of talk about whether it should be abutters within 50 feet of the property affected or some other number, and I'm just wondering if you had any insights into why the planning board went the way that it did.
Well, I strongly encouraged the 50 feet. I was concerned about the administrative burden. If it grew out to 200, 400 feet, we'd be sending 25 notices out, and when you send out notices, that generates calls and visits, so I did see it. At the level it's at now, I don't think it'll be burdensome administratively. I do think if that number grew to 200 feet, I was nervous that the administrative burden would be a little too much for our office.
And was it your view that 50-feet distance would capture the immediate abutters to the property that had the permit issued for?
Yeah. Yeah, you obviously get each abutter on the side. If there's an abutter on the rear, and 50 feet, there, it's very rare that a right-of-way, other than Route 77, is more than 50 feet wide, so you'll get the abutters across the street and immediately adjacent, and I think that's most important. Those are the people most affected.
Not necessarily for Ben, maybe for Kathy. The folks that were concerned about this, did they weigh in in your meetings and in the public input portion of whatever?
Yes. We had many people weigh in, and they had concerns about the setback, and actually, Ben came to some of our meetings to assure them and actually worked with some of the folks that thought it should be 100, 200 feet.
Yeah.
And he gave them some examples that the 50 feet would in fact cover the, you know, immediate abutters. And I don't know, he could probably comment on how well that particular, you know, aspect went, because that wasn't part of the meeting, but he worked with those folks outside of the ordinance committee meeting. But we did have a lot of participation in these meetings.
Yeah.
We really did. So, and I think that we did our best to reach out to the people who had concerns and give them an opportunity to speak, and, you know, and we adjusted some of our thought process from some of the comments that they made. So, I don't know if Jessica or David want to add anything, but--
Anybody? Ben, any feedback from you in terms of those conversations around 100?
We did alter the ordinance a bit based on some of the comments, and a few folks did come into the office during the day to get on our GIS so they could see what would happen. We picked a few different properties and did a 50-foot radius off of those properties so they could see exactly who would be noticed in different situations. And once they saw that, they did see that more people, more people would be noticed than they initially thought. 50 feet sounds pretty short, but when you go from every corner of the property, it ends up grabbing several neighbors. You end up with four to eight people usually.
Is the notice going to be just the US Post, or is it going to be certified?
US Post.
US Post, okay. Did you want to add anything, Jessica?
Well, the other part of settling on 50 feet, it was Ben's recommendation, and we had, again, a lot of the public that came to our meetings, and various citizens offered 100 feet, 250 feet, 500 feet was one. And for all matters of practicality, 50 feet from all the property line perimeters does bring in all the immediate abutters, and when you go beyond that, the issue becomes, well, where do you draw the line? You know, so 50 feet kept coming back as the most practical solution. It definitely will incorporate all immediate abutters, so.
Yeah. Good. Frank, you had a question?
Yeah, two things. First, is this a, just comparison to surrounding communities, is this ordinance consistent with other communities like ours that are in the median area?
We did have a building permit notification in York. It was only within 125 feet of the ocean, so this expands upon that slightly, but that notice did grab more people. It went out 200 feet, and that's how I sort of understood the administrative task of when you notify people, you know, when you notify 25 people, it really generates a workload versus notifying about five people. It'd be negligible.
And I guess I would imagine that if five people are being notified in a neighborhood, that notice doesn't stick with those five people.
Correct.
So, it's not that anyone's being robbed of any rights.
Yeah. Good.
And we'll see how it, excuse me, and we'll see how it goes in the first year, and, you know, if we're missing people, they'll let us know, and we could propose a change to stretch it out.
Yeah. If you were to look at the property that was disputed in Shore Acres, and given the proposed changes to the ordinance, how many people would have been noticed in this situation? How many abutters?
There's a couple there. I, Murphy Goldman, is that the one you're on?
I mean, I guess I was thinking of the Livingston property.
If I remember correctly, you get three abutters across the street because of the way the 50-foot goes across the street, and then you get the two on either side.
Right.
And then, in that case, the ocean's to the rear, so I think it was five.
Five, okay.
And following up on Frank's point, did you do a survey of other towns other than York?
No, I didn't.
Okay. And finally, is there a definition in the ordinance, in the definition section of the ordinance regarding what minimum setback means? Because when I read that, I'm a little bit confused, you know? I don't practice this type of law. It just says within 10 feet of the minimum setback.
Yeah, the minimum setbacks are, they're in the dimensional tables as the required setback in different zones. For the Pilot Point neighborhood, it's 25 feet on the sides because those are non-conforming lots. So, if someone was proposing in addition within 35 feet of that side property line, that would trigger the notice.
So, could someone do expansion of their structure that's substantial, that doesn't fall within the 10 feet of the minimum setback, not trigger this notice requirement?
Yes. Yeah, if you're not within 125 feet of a normal high water mark, so that could be inland or coastal, if you're not in that 125-foot zone and you're not within 10 feet of your setback, then you could do significant expansions without triggering the notice.
Any other questions for Ben? The fact that there are a couple lawsuits pending, is there any, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. I mean, because we're making this change, which was one of the reasons why they wound up having a lawsuit in the first place, because they found out about something after the timeline-- up having a lawsuit in the first place, because they found out about something after the timeline had expired in terms of them questioning the permit, is no issues about us putting something in place at the moment without those two cases having been resolved or decided upon?
I don't believe any of those cases are direct onto this point, onto the degree to which the town provided notification. In fact, I believe in all of these suits, it's people suing other people, and we're listed as a party. I don't recall that we're being directly sued.
Okay. Just curious. David?
Just as a bit of a follow-up to Jamie's last question, I think one of the reasons why we limited the notice to additions or structures within close proximity to the setback or to the ocean was the feeling among at least the ordinance committee that just because you're building an addition doesn't mean notice goes out to your neighbors if you're not going to be doing something that will impact them as directly as a structure with being that close to the setback. So there was a desire to limit the times that notice would go out. I didn't express that very coherently, but that was essentially the intent, at least from the ordinance committee.
Yeah. And then going back to Jamie's point, you don't see any issues with that in, you know, going back and rethinking that decision that you made? I mean, it's clear that the impact is a very clear determiner in whether we give notice or not to the neighbors. But it sounds to me like it's pretty solid in terms of it's not impactful, so therefore why? But, you know, it's like everything else, I'm sure. Frank?
The only thing I can think of is instances where people are raving in their home and blocking views.
Yeah. And how does that get covered, Ben?
Well...
That's a volume issue, right?
More often than not, that'll be within 125 feet of the ocean is where those issues will arise. So we will capture most of those with that.
Okay. Good. Any other, David and Michael?
Just quickly to follow up Jamie's question. The ordinance does not define minimum setback. It defines both setback and front setback. But as Ben mentioned, within all sorts of tables, it then takes this definition and refers to a minimum setback, which, as you know, ties back in with the setback definition.
Good. Any further, okay. Kathy?
So with maybe most of the questions answered, I'd like to move that we approve the building permit issuance notification procedure.
Can I ask one more question of Ben? I'll be in here.
Okay. Can you hold that thought? We're looking for a second until we get one. We could get a second and then have the question, but let's...
Doesn't matter, whatever.
Jamie, go ahead.
Ben, so with both the properties that are in court, in Shore Acres, would this, the 10-foot minimum setback, would that have captured those two properties?
Yes. Not the 10-foot setback, the 125 feet to the water.
Because it's second floors.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So that answers that question.
Yeah. So I guess that begs the question of, are we only concerned with houses that are being built on the water, or are we concerned in general wherever they are in town?
Well, I think the primary concern is the waterfront. I think that's where most of these issues arise. But there was opinions expressed from people that came in that really wanted other triggers in there, such as people getting close to the setback. So that was mostly in response to public feedback that we got.
Doesn't this also apply, Ben, to any expansion of a structure if it's within 10 feet of the minimum setback? So it's really, if something is real close to a setback line, then it would apply. And that's basically getting at the other issue the council's been getting at sometimes is when, you know, people claim with some of these short things, remember the survey requirement and that whole discussion?
Yeah.
When there's something really close by to...
Wood press or whatever, it was a problem.
And there's been others too. But just to be sure that if folks have their own issues in terms of what property lines, and not that we take a position on it, but at least they have a chance to make us aware of those concerns.
So you don't need to restate your motion.
As stated a couple minutes ago.
Okay. We have a second for Kathy, a second David. Thank you. Do we have any discussion or further discussion? Yes, Jessica?
I think this is actually not part of the addition to the ordinance, but I noticed a, I think a grammatical issue in Section D1. It reads, "The decision of the code enforcement officer shall be in writing citing the provisions of the ordinance that apply and communicated directly to the applicant." It probably should read either "be communicated directly to the applicant" or "communicate directly to the applicant." Just a little clearer that way.
So with our English teacher's direction, would you amend the, do you have a point of view about that one, Ben?
That's not a new section. That's an exist...
I know.
Oh, okay.
It's existing.
Okay.
Yeah, I just noticed it. I know it's existing. It bothered me.
So do we need to correct the old section, or are we moving on with the new?
I don't know.
Since there's a conjunctive between writing and communicating, so I think the "shall be" refers to both writing and communication.
So you don't think it's incorrect?
I don't think so.
I think either way it's fine, so I'd be inclined to leave it as is.
Leave it the way it is. As the second, you'd have to make modification in your motion anyway. So we're going to leave it to Kathy.
Oh, thanks.
It's your decision.
Yeah, I was going to say, where's Mary Brunns? Whatever the council prefers. I mean, yeah.
Why don't I withdraw my suggestion?
Okay. So we're going to vote on this as is. Okay. The motion stands. It's been seconded. I'm going to move the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Ben and Kathy and the ordinance committee. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate your efforts. Okay. Item number 118, the Trout Brook grant application. And I guess move this to...
Town Planner Maureen is more critical on this with some representatives of the Soil and Water Conservation Service, the city of South Portland, some property owners and others. And she's here to give an update and to introduce the folks that are with her.
Yeah, I'm here with Patrick Maras and Chris Baldwin from the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. And I also have a map here that shows you a section of Trout Brook. Trout Brook watershed is an airman impaired watershed in, let's see, I was pulling my old notes, I think it was 2007. The town council created a community fee utilization program, and the benefit of that program is we had a developer who was going to have to pay a fee. And either he was going to spend money in another town to do some stormwater improvements, or we could keep the money here in Cape Elizabeth and wait for a good project. So the council created the community fee utilization program, the CFUP, and we've had that money sitting, waiting for a good project. Along comes the Trout Brook watershed, and I'm hoping that most of you remember that the council, I think, recently approved a Trout Brook watershed management plan. The city of South Portland and the town of Cape Elizabeth have been working jointly on this watershed. We've had a tremendous amount of leadership from South Portland, had a lot of interest from the Cape Elizabeth Conservation Commission, the South Portland Conservation Commission. They met jointly in May. We have had a steering group that got together for a different grant, and we decided that there was a bunch of projects that we wanted to apply for right on the Cape-South Portland border. That other grant didn't really match what we were proposing. We weren't invited to submit a full grant application, but we have prepared a grant application for the 319 grant program. And that's what we're looking for, authorization from the council tonight to authorize us to submit a grant that would allow us to make some improvements, both to the Equestrian Center on Route 77, which the boundary with South Portland is right about here. This is the Church of Latter Day Saints and the Equestrian Center. Trout Brook runs right through here, and we are basically talking about a whole series of improvements along this section to basically clean water that's flowing off these properties before it enters the brook. So if you have any specific questions about the proposal, what I'd like to do is bring up our experts and have them tell you one of the specific things that we're talking about. But what we'd like to do is take $22,000 from the CFUP program and use it as a match for a grant program that requires a 40% match. So this allows us to stretch our dollars a much farther distance, and it really does help us, in particular with this agricultural use, in helping them do some work to clean up their stormwater. The town would be putting in some in-kind resources, some financial resources. The Equestrian Center is also putting in some financial resources and some in-kind resources. The Latter Day Saints has offered some in-kind resources and permission to use their property. So we've really been able to pull together a lot of different groups very quickly. And of course, we have two days until the grant is due, so.
Just threw that in at the end. Thank you.
Any questions so far?
Good. Well, do we want our guests to at least come up to the podium and introduce themselves? So we, I mean, it's a... Yes, David?
It might be interesting also to hear about the progress that they've made to date on this overall front.
Sure. Maybe they can do, yeah?
I'm Patrick Maras. I'm the urban watershed coordinator from the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay.
And I'm Christopher Baldwin, district engineer with the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Good. And David's question about progress with the work that you folks have been doing, any update you could give us? I mean, it's pretty exciting in a lot of ways, so anything you could report on progress to date, or anything that you want to brag about?
Well, so we're currently managing Phase One grant for Trout Brook. And actually, the city of South Portland is the grantee for that, but we've been partnering with the town of Cape Elizabeth. We've done a lot of outreach to the neighborhoods, the State Avenue neighborhood here. One of the projects we're going to try and be doing is putting some buffer plantings in along the edge here because there's some drainage problems, as some of you may know in that neighborhood. So we've made some outreach there. We've also done some outreach to the farms. There's three farms in the watershed, so we've done some outreach to them as well. We're going to be doing some outreach to some neighborhoods in South Portland as well. So we've reached out to some neighborhoods there. So we really, the grant started back in May, so we've kind of hit the ground running. And through the outreach that we were able to do to the ag, we found out that this property was interested in doing some more work with us. So that was kind of the initial push of the first phase, was to do more outreach and then get into the neighborhoods and kind of do some education. So that's what we've done to date.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Yeah. Are any of the activities of any of the abutting landowners negatively affecting the watershed right now?
From the abutting, so not including these two right here?
No, including them.
Oh, including, yeah. Both of these properties were identified in the watershed management plan as having, you know, having adverse effects on the water quality through the stormwater. So there's some drainage issues, I guess you could say, with the horse farm, with the way the paddocks come down, and also with this large amount of impervious surface right along the stream right here. Both these properties were identified in the watershed management plan as, you know, we're going to try to address some of those issues as we implement the plan and try to restore Trout Brook. So both of these properties were initially identified in the planning process. And that's one of the reasons why we targeted them for this next phase.
And is part of the plan to address the future behavior of those landowners?
Yeah. Part of this project, we're trying to kind of educate them and change the way that they look at what they do on their property. And so we've already made a lot of great contact with the Equestrian Center, and she had recently purchased the property, not purchased, but started running the property there. And she was well aware of some of the drainage issues that she had and was really interested in doing some work to try and address those. But as you can imagine, a lot of these fixes are fairly expensive, so being able to stretch her dollars as far as we can is what the purpose of this grant application is.
Just a, a horse farm is a very nutrient-rich environment. And particularly as that goes into the brook, if you have a very nutrient-rich environment in a brook, that's what causes all sorts of stuff to grow that you don't want growing and interrupts the natural flow of the brook.
Yep. Yeah, that's correct. So specifically, what we're proposing to do includes right now the manure, there's 22 horses in the Equestrian Center. We're proposing to put a covered manure storage facility here right now. The pile is just kind of out in the open, so when it rains, it can flow through it. So we're trying to do, address that. We're going to be taking, this is a very 1,800-square-foot roof right here, we're going to be trying to take that rainwater. Right now, it flows down across the paddocks, and in high rains, or in heavy rains, it'll actually flow across the parking lot here. And so what we're going to try and do is collect that rainwater there, build some swales along the edge to try and contain it onto that property, and build what are called gravel wetlands. They're a, you know, stormwater treatment device that we're going to try and collect that, treat it, get as much of the nutrients out as we can before it gets into the brook. So those are the more specifics for the horse farm, trying to address that nutrient issue, which was identified in the plan as one of the problems on this stretch of the stream was the high nutrients, which causes low dissolved oxygen, as Michael mentioned, some problems for the stream.
In the Mormon church, it's the parking lot and the roof, I guess.
Yep. So we're proposing to collect, this is a large, this is about 1,700 square feet, the roof here. So we're going to be trying to collect, what?
17,000.
Oh, 17,000, sorry. Yeah, 17,000. So we're trying to collect that as well. And then this corner of the parking lot right here is right along the stream, so we're going to be, there's some scouring happening along the bank, so we'll try and address that, stabilize that. They have an existing stormwater, is your question? Detention pond down here, and we're going to be trying to rehab that. We're addressing it right now. It's not functioning properly, so we're going to try and work with that as well. So it's a high, you know, as you can see, these land uses are really close to the brook, and that proximity allows for a lot more nutrients and a lot more volume issues. So hopefully with this, if the application is approved and moved forward, it will be good projects for the brook.
Agreed. Well, thank you. Any further questions from anybody? Jamie?
Yeah. So on the other side of the street, what about any of the abutting landowners on that side with any applications on their lawns?
Application, as in like...
You know, sometimes people use some types of pesticides.
Pesticides and fertilizers.
You're talking State Street?
Yeah.
State Street?
Yep. And that's what we're, that's through this current phase.
You're going to do block plantings, right? Is that what you're planning?
Yep. So through this current phase, in October, the State Avenue neighborhood is going to have a neighborhood block party, and we'll be, we've been invited to attend that and to talk to residents about kind of lawn or water-friendly land use practices. And we're trying, you know, there are some areas that, you know, the lawn comes right up to the stream, so we're going to be trying to put in buffer plantings, like I mentioned, and rain gardens, which is another way to collect and infiltrate stormwater runoff. So we're going to try and really hit as many of the landowners directly adjacent to the stream here with, at that meeting, and then kind of do some more education and outreach with them there.
Is all State Street in Cape Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Including the park?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the town line kind of zigzags here, and it comes, like Maureen mentioned, that South Portland's here, but it, I think all of this is in the town of Cape Elizabeth.
Good. Great. Okay. Chair, we'll entertain a motion on authorizing the town manager to make application. So do we have anybody who wishes to make that? David?
I move that we authorize the town manager to apply for a Section 319 grant for the Trout Brook area.
Do I have a second? Jamie? Seconded. Any further discussion about this? Did you want to say something?
No, I was just being noisy with my iPad. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, whoa, he's got the application all done. That's what he's doing there. So, okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Maureen, for your time, and best of luck with this. It's pretty exciting. Big development for us. Okay, item number 119, were minor modification to the sore easement behind Rudy's. Mr. McGovern will give us a...
Yes, thank you, Jim. I think everyone is aware that Rudy's is about to be redeveloped. In fact, the building permit was just recently issued. There could be some activity there very, very shortly. One of the things is looking at the building permit application is they're putting in one of these wood-burning pizzeria-type things, you know, with the, and when we reviewed the plans, it infringed ever so slightly onto the easement. And they wanted us to reduce the easement. We said, no, we're not going to do that. It's only 20 feet. Find another way to do it. Suggested they contact the property owner in back. Good news is, the property owner was more than happy to work with them. They were able to work it out so that they purchased an easement from the one in back of like five feet. And as a result, it's a much better easement further equidistant away from the property. So if there ever is a need, that'll be much easier to do. So since the council had approved the original easement, we felt it was appropriate to come back to you and for you to agree to the modification with the easement as shown in discussion. back to you and for you to agree to the modification with the easement as shown in described in the materials.
Do I have a motion? Yes, Frank?
I move that we authorize a minor modification to the easement behind Rudy's.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by David. Any discussion? Yes, Jamie?
I didn't know whether or not any of this would require a further site plan review.
Yeah, if you look at the, the agenda, it indicates that this is also subject to approval by the planning board. You know, we, we won't file this amendment until they also approve it. It was, it was one of these chicken and egg ones, you know, which goes first, and our, you know, our, our hope, the planning board meets the next couple of days, and our hope was to, to get it resolved so that, you know, I think everyone, we, we, you know, particularly, you know, you hear about a bank closing in town, and we need, we need to help out the local businesses to be successful.
Any other questions? Caitlin, did, we're, I just bring it up to speed, we're, we're working on this minor modification to a sore easement behind Rudy's. Relates to a wood burning stove that needs a small modification to what we've already given them. So just to bring you in, in the loop. No other, no other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to item 120, request for an amendment extending the use of sandwich board signs. Do you wish to bring that up, or?
I'd be happy to, if you'd like me to.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, under the current ordinance, the sign ordinance is, I believe, a 90-day limitation on sandwich board signs. There's, we heard a member of the Cape Business Alliance, Janice Stockson, who owns the Shore and Things consignment shop over in back of us here, that she'd like the town to consider some different policies involving those sandwich board signs. I was a little bit unsure from her letter, she was representing the, the business lines, where she said she was a member of the business lines, but regardless, you know, some of the other members of the business lines have also expressed concerns about sandwich board signs, and, you know, it, it seems as though a review might be appropriate since there is quite a bit of interest.
And I will detain a motion. Anyone wish to make a motion on this? Frank?
I move that we refer this request for the amendment extending the use of sandwich board signs to the ordinance committee.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Caitlin, thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, I note that the moving council member and the second are both not on the ordinance committee, but I will.
So noted. The notes reflect that.
But the issue has come up, so I think it makes sense to send it along to us for review.
Good. Any conversation? I'll move, okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous, seven zip. Item 121, the outdoor shooting range, question is, it relates to hiring Ken Cole. Before we move on this, we need to ask Jamie to...
Do I really have to step down?
You have to, not, there's no stepping down now because we're, we're on the same level, so we have to ask you to sit in the first row or front row or whatever, if you would be so kind. Thank you, sir. Okay. Do I have a motion? Jamie?
I move that the town retain Attorney Kenneth Cole of the Jensen Baird Law Firm to assist in the development of a potential ordinance, ordinance amendments relating to outdoor shooting ranges, and to report back to the council by December 2nd, 2013.
Do I have a second? Seconded, Caitlin, thank you. Any discussion?
Only question is, the, the date that we decided on, December 2nd, is that considered like the first time really realistically, get something back?
Yeah, you know, it, it...
Yeah, true.
At the, the meeting the other day, we discussed the end of November, and then I actually looked at the calendar, just the way Thanksgiving and whatever, it, it just seemed to make sense at the beginning of next week. But it, you know, it seems like a reasonable amount of time for him to meet with the various parties, to see if there's, if there's any, you know, any coming together of the minds, and then, you know, to the degree that there is and to the degree that there isn't, for them to him to then put together a proposal for, for the council to consider. It'll be something good for the new council to handle.
I was thinking exactly that.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm more than happy to have whoever made this motion modify it so it fits into your very last meeting.
No, it's okay.
You sure?
No, we can do, take up the rooster issue at the same time if you want.
Oh, you want us to cover all of the unfinished business for your four years?
Yeah.
But I, I think this is a real opportunity to, to work on this issue and the, and the parties coming together to talk about the various issues and hopefully bringing something forward that makes sense.
Good. Any other conversation? No? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie, for coming back up to the table. It's, there's no longer a stepping down, if you notice, it's kind of moved to the side, whatever. Okay, number 122, library space planning. Do we have a recommendation here? Anybody want to give any background to this? We have a couple people on the, on the library.
The committee chair.
And we also have committee chair. Would you like, Jessica?
Well, the committee chairman is in the audience, so if it pleases the council, perhaps she would like to speak to us.
So Molly, would you like to come up and join us?
I need to introduce myself.
Well, for the folks at home.
Yeah, thank you. Molly McCoslin, I'm the Chair of the Library Planning Committee, and, excuse me, we have been a very busy committee for the last, I don't know what it's been, five months? Four months? Seems like we meet at least every 10 days or so. As you may know, we had our public input meeting on August 29th. I thought we had pretty good turnout, we had close to 70 people come to that meeting. And we've reached a point in our process now where we're ready to hire an architectural firm to come and help us do some work on programming. And as a committee, we interviewed, or a subcommittee of the larger committee, we interviewed four firms, all highly qualified, all very enthusiastic. It was a hard choice to make, but I think the final decision was the right one, and we selected, am I allowed to say that mic or is it public now? Yes, we selected Reed and Company, they're a Portland-based architectural firm, small firm. They have worked on, I think it's 20 public library projects in the last 30 years, they're very experienced and very knowledgeable about the process in general and about our process specifically. So I think tonight, what is on your agenda is a request to fund that programming work for us. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody else might have, but that's pretty much where we're at in the process.
Let us get a, let's get a motion in a second. Stay right there.
I will.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve item 122, the library space planning, and authorize the town manager to spend an amount not to exceed $20,000 to continue development of plans for space for library services.
Do I have a second? Yes, Kathy? Seconded. We have discussion. Any questions for Molly or for any member of the planning? Caitlin?
Just the amount, 20,000, where did that figure come from? What's the reality of reaching it?
Looking at Molly, I think the particular contract with Reed and Company will be for $15,000. There's also an alternate there for, for $5,000 to come up with a rendering of what the exterior might look like. At this point, you know, and I, I wrote an email to, to Mr. Reed today indicating that I was, you know, pending tonight's action, I was inclined to agree, to sign the agreement for the 15,000, but as far as the rendering, that would be something we'd, we'd consider later on at some point to authorize that. It, so it's 15,000 for the direct, and then, you know, somewhere, you get other incidental expenses as well, so that's the gist of where the money comes, the proposal.
And their proposals, I think, am I, sorry, am I still allowed to speak?
Go ahead.
Okay. They're, all the proposals from the four firms that we talked to were pretty much all in the same range, pretty much around $15,000.
Caitlin, any further?
Just going to ask, it was, I read the RPF or whatever the letters are there, the bid to go out, and it says it's based on hourly rates, so they truly believe it's going to take $15,000 worth of hourly work to complete?
I, I think typically, on the projects I've worked on in the past, most architects will provide you with an hourly rate, but you have a little bit of negotiating room. And in this particular situation, we asked, based on the proposals that we received, what people were anticipating the overall project cost would be. And what we heard really across the board was, you're looking at $15,000.
I think, just if I might, I think the other thing to note is that in, in the interview and in discussion, it was indicated that this would be a credit toward the overall architectural fees if the project should continue, with the architectural fees being primarily based on this, the rates that are established by the state of Maine through the Bureau of General Services. So it would, it would be a credit as well to the overall architectural fees for the project.
You all set, Caitlin, Ted? Okay, Frank?
Maybe Molly can just describe what we're going to get for that money, so.
Sure.
Mike, do you have a copy of that scope of work that you sent along today? Because it might be good to give people an idea based on that document what all is included. It was a one-page document, and I think they were pretty specific in terms of what it was they were going to do for us. I, in a nutshell, I can give you a real quick overview, but I, in terms of being accurate, it might be better to be looking at that document. I think what they'll be looking at is all the work that has been done in the past. They'll review the programming work that was done. They'll take a look at the documentation that has identified the outstanding deficiencies in the building. They'll work with what I'll call some focus groups or some smaller groups of people from the greater community, get a sense of what's, what, I'll give you an example, what the parents of school-aged children might be interested in seeing specifically in a library program. Thank you. No, that's great. So, and forgive me, I'm going to read from this. So in their first service item, they'll be reviewing all of the existing information, as I just mentioned. They'll look at the previous studies that have been done, the property survey work, the existing building conditions and deficiencies. They'll take a look at the input that we heard at the roundtable discussion on August 29th. Step two, they'll be looking for input about the needs and goals for the library. They'll be looking at the input from our library planning committee, and they'll also be looking at input certainly from the library director and his staff, and then they'll finally be looking for some input from the school folks. Third, they'll work at developing a preliminary building program using the available models of library space allocations, and I think what they're referring to specifically there is the, the standards by either the American Library Association or the Maine Library Association. They'll be looking at comparing existing Thomas Memorial Library space allocations to what they are proposing in a new document that would extend that. Am I...
My sound effect.
Okay. Yes, I could hear the echoing back there. Thank you. Fourth, they'll be using the proposed new space allocations to develop what they're calling a concept plan, and that would include a site plan and then, and this is extremely preliminary, because one of the things that they talked to us about, can you still hear me? I feel like I'm getting softer. Yes. One of the things that they had talked to us about was the difference between the possibility of doing a building that's all on one floor versus a two-story building, and what some of the implications of that might be in terms of both operating efficiencies for the library staff, but also for the operating efficiencies of the building itself. Better? Is that okay?
I'm sorry, all of us are getting like the echo effect that we had earlier.
Yeah, we have a sound effect, yeah, this is, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Better, I'm sorry, better when that door is closed. So on their, item number four, they're saying they're going to look at the site plan and also a lower-level plan and an upper-level plan. As I said, this is very preliminary, because I don't think we're that far along in the planning process to know whether we're talking about a single-story building or a two-story building.
Or renovation versus a complete rebuild.
Number five, prepare a project budget based on the proposed building program. And number six, assess the, they call it the TML Advisory Committee, we've called it the Library Planning Committee, in presentations to the community. So again, we'll be looking for more input from the public, might be in a smaller focus group kinds of sessions rather than the kind of community input meeting that we had in August that was, as I said, I think, well-attended with close to 70 people coming to that. Yes?
Great. Yes, Caitlin?
Just to clarify, make sure I heard you correctly, so they're going to look at, you know, an option, one-story, two-story renovations versus rebuild, and give all that information for those basically four different options? The budgets, the, like, step four, you kind of said they would do the one-story, the two-story, and Frank said the renovations versus rebuild, and then step five was budgets and all that, does...
Yes. I, I think our expectation that is, is that at the end of this process, we will have a recommendation to bring to the council, and it will have been based on looking at those various scenarios, including the budget implications for each one of those.
We haven't identified four specific options. We haven't done...
No, no, just, I was just saying, basically, my question was, they're going to look at several different options, give the budget for several different options, give all the information for several different options. This was, you know, not that they would give options, and then you would pick which option to get all of the rest of the information for. Does that make sense? No? Okay, so, just kind of shaking her head. So if they were to give you four options, give you four options, the committee, and then they only take that one option that you select to give out the rest of their information?
I don't think they'll give us four options. I think it will be a give-and-take process for us to get input from them, for us to give input back to them, for us to get further input from the community, and get a sense of the overall needs for the project. And once we have more clearly defined what those needs are and how they can best be addressed, we'll ask them to do a little bit more work on that and then on budgeting for that, and then that will be our recommendation to the council after we've been through kind of massaging each one of those possible options, or any and all of those scenarios.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say it's going to be a very iterative and interactive process.
That's true.
And they've got, I mean, as Molly said, they've done over 20 libraries, very similar to ours in terms of the, sort of the demographics of the towns, and one of the things that was extremely appealing about them was that they really understood what we were going through. Many of their projects have been going on for five to 10 years before the towns could really come to grips with what they were going to do, and they had this intuitive sense of what we needed, which made that, made it very appealing as a firm to work with, I think.
Good. Any further questions from Molly? Yes, Jamie?
I take it the, the building deficiencies will just be a review of the existing report, not a new analysis?
I think that's correct. I think they will start with the existing report, but I, I know architects, and I know most architects really love buildings for one reason or another, and I think because they are architects, they will spend time walking through that building and looking pretty carefully at what's there, how it exists right now. I think that's kind of the mindset, and I think doing that kind of a walkthrough gets architects more excited and gets their creative juices flowing and makes them probably more productive and certainly more creative in coming up with their solutions. So while with my particular background, I'm more likely to look at the list of 102 deficiencies and want to check them off one by one and say, we need to deal with this, we need to deal with that. I suspect that they'll be more likely to look at that list and walk through the space and envision the possibilities rather than look to fix a particular problem.
Hmm.
Good.
Any, any other questions?
A question for maybe Mike. I came on to the council as this was just starting, so just if we could, a quick refresh for me... just if we could, a quick refresh for me as to what we did that led to the first proposal. Did we do this process, or did we do a different process? How did we get to the, the first drawing?
Through the chair. Yeah, the first, the earlier process started maybe about seven years ago. The library, it started with the library trustees. They were very interested in looking at future library space issues, space needs, addressing a whole host of issues with the library. They came to the council, they got permission to hire a couple of firms. They did some interviewing. They ended up hiring a library consulting firm as well as an architectural firm. They then went and had all sorts of focus group meetings, all sorts of different meetings. They, they sort of involved the council a little bit late in the process. The council had a meeting that, quite frankly, didn't go very well back about four years ago, because they presented for about three hours, and that's a slight exaggeration. The council really didn't have much of a chance to ask questions, and it was, it was a bad start. The then-process continued. They looked at, working with the architect, different design iterations. They looked at the potential of fundraising. The council authorized the hiring of a fundraising consultant. There was another focus group, study group, that looked at the different plan and suggested you ought to refer to it as a cultural center. That then got a backlash as that went on, and it, it just, you know, kept going on. The, the good thing about, I think, this process is that, you know, I think we've, we've learned from the mistakes of the past. We, we know that there was concern in the past about affordability. We know there was concern about process. We know there was concern about fixing different issues. We know that there were real integrations, real issues of the integration with the school community and how we might cooperate with them. And there were also issues with just the whole cost structure of the whole thing, which goes back to the affordability issue. And, you know, as Frank said, and Molly has also alluded to, this particular firm, with their broad Maine experience working with libraries and having read the different materials and knowing the process that we already went through, believed that they can learn from that process, both with, with some of the facts and data that's there, but, but also need, also understand that we need new solutions, because the previous solution was, was clearly not approved at the polls.
And it is a very different process this time. We do have three town councilors on the committee, excuse me, a school board member, and I'm a trustee at the Thomas Memorial Library. So we, we have, we're starting from a different point, and I think our expectation is we will have certainly a better process that I hope will be very inclusive of various points of view within the community. But I think we also are very aware of what went to the voters last time. And I think we're being, I think, somewhat more cautious and more conservative about how we approach the project. I'll, I'll just give you my own two cents. I want the right solution. I don't want an overpriced and oversized solution, nor do I want a short-sighted solution that leaves us with a renovated building or a new building that is either cheaply built or undersized and puts us back in the same spot 10 years or 20 years from now, when we all know that libraries are changing. Technology changes every single day. So whatever we plan for, it needs to be the right solution, and it needs to be the right solution for the long term, not the right solution for next week, or next year, or even the next two to five years. So I, I think we have a very different process and a very different approach this time. And I'm, I'm very optimistic about the work that our committee has done, but also about where we'll end up. And we'll be back, I suspect, in early November. That's my, my target. Our committee has worked very hard.
Thank you, Molly.
Yes, you're welcome.
Ready to take a vote here? Jessica?
I just wanted to add that I believe that, and Mike can correct me, that also the 2007 to 2009 library study that was done was also essentially done as another recommendation of the comprehensive plan, because the library was viewed then as a facility that needed review. And so I believe that was also part of that, the beginnings of that.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Yes, looks that way.
Say one quick thing. You know, I think another difficulty was in the beginning is that I never sensed the council, never sensed the council felt as though they owned the process. And, you know, I think one good thing about keeping, coming back to the council on these different issues is the council is being updated regularly, and at the same time, the public isn't. I think, you know, if you really, a lot's gonna happen in the next couple months. And, you know, all of these meetings, although there's councilors who serve on them, are open to all council members. And, you know, just because you're not on the committee, you, and I know you have busy schedules, but, you know, don't feel as though that you're not welcome to, to fully participate and sit in, because it, this is, you know, a big decision coming up. And I think it's really important that, that, you know, everyone in the community, but particularly the leaders of the community who are elected, really understand the different thought processes that are going into this decision.
Thank you. I, I agree. I think that would be very helpful to have more participation anytime it's available.
Okay. All those in favor of the library space planning recommendation? We have all those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Molly, for your
Thank you.
time and talent.
And thank you for getting me out of here to pick my daughter up at Driver Ed at 8:25. So that was very good timing. Thank you.
Great. Good. Okay, item 123, the solar street lighting update. When one of our council goals is, it's really from Neil Williams. I don't know whether you want to update. It just seems to be an update on the status. He admits very, very, very quickly in his memo that he's not a specialist when it comes to solar lighting. However, he does give us an update and some of what may have potential down the road, but that's pretty much it. I don't know, Michael, did you wanna?
Yeah, just, you know, I think he, he gave a report, and I think the real key is, I think there's two major points in it, is solar lighting is expensive. And two, in large part a result of work done by South Portland and Falmouth, the legislature passed a bill allowing municipalities to have more flexibility with their street lighting programs and not be forced into the, the cookie-cutter approach that, that the utility companies have provided us. And the Maine Public Utilities Commission is going to be looking at taking that legislation and giving some meat to it and really seeing, you know, what communities can do with, for example, LED alternatives and, and other possibilities. And so a lot of this is really dependent upon what, what the PUC really comes up with in terms of its interpretation of the new legislation that was, that's passed this last session.
The update from, in terms of what Greg has done on all of the different buildings in town was also equally interesting to see how far along that has gone. So is this a, we just need to accept the report?
Acknowledge receipt.
Acknowledge receipt?
Yeah.
Frank, you have a question?
Yeah, why's it coming, why did Neil do this work as opposed to Greg?
Neil oversees the street lighting program for the town, public safety. It's a public safety issue. And he, he has to, if someone wants to streetlight, he's the one that is delegated for making those decisions. So you, as a council, don't need to deal with them at every meeting.
Good. Can I have a motion to accept? Jessica?
I move that we accept item number 123, the solar street lighting update from Chief of Police Neil Williams.
Have a second? Yes, Jamie, thank you. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's unanimous. Item 124, the combined sewer overflow, public permit hearing. So I need a motion on this item? Or do you want to give some background on this first? Michael?
Yeah, this is a mandated public hearing under a combined sewer overflow permit. We, we submitted to the DEP about a year and a half ago, a, an, a permit response application, and they finally acted upon it about 15 months later. And they indicated when they did that, and oh, by the way, now, before you do anything, now is the time when you need to have a public hearing and, and welcome public comments. So it's proposed to be at your meeting on October 7th. There'll be a representative here from Wright Pierce, the engineering firm we're working with, as well as a representative from the Water District on this combined sewer overflow, which is right at the South Portland Cape Elizabeth line again, although this time over by the ocean, and not, not over by traffic. But it's, I know you, we did have a workshop.
We did.
Chris Duennell came a while ago, but we now do have this opportunity to have a public hearing and to welcome public comments. And a copy of the plan is available for public inspection at the Department of Public Works, and I, we were trying to get it online. I'm not sure if it's quite there yet, but if it's, it will be in the next couple days.
Entertain a motion? We should, Frank, Frank do the heavy lifting.
I had two ready tonight.
That's two? That's your max? Okay, David?
I move that we schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 7th at 7:00 PM for the combined sewer overflow permit.
A second.
Good. Jumped right on that one, Frank, didn't you? That was good. Any discussion about this? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? And all those opposed? It's unanimous. And the last item on this agenda before we move to the 125 is a second opportunity for our citizens to talk with us on items that are not on the agenda. Seeing no one in the audience? Are we getting a phone call from a citizen?
Apparently, I didn't turn my phone on. They need to call in.
You're getting a call in. Sorry about that. Okay. Seeing no citizens, we'll move on to item 125, and the chair will entertain a motion. Jessica?
I move that we approve item number 125 and enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter in accordance with MRSA state, what is that?
Section.
Section 4056A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathy seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Do we?
No act, yeah, cameras will go off.
And then we, okay. All right. Just, thank you very much.